Why are you a candidate?
We're gonna allow them a two-minute opening. Sorry. Two-minute opening.
That was quick. We were finished.
We start with Richard.
Let me stand up because I can't see half the people here. Richard Lane from the candidate for school board District 4. I want to take just a short time here. I want to thank the Lord for the opportunity to come before you. There's a lot of prayer and consideration before I made the decision. Part of that decision was resulted in talking with Jim Adams at his office. A couple of years ago, we had a sensible conversation about the school board. I want to thank him for his efforts and convincing me that this is the way to go.
My name is Kimberly Baldwin. And many of you know me already. You're familiar with my qualifications. And if you need more information, it's on the back of my bio card. The thing that I really wanted to share with you today is some things that you may not know about me. One of those is that I love to teach. I have a passion for education. I enjoy teaching at Florida State College of Jacksonville and the Occupational Therapy Assistant Program. I enjoy teaching in 4H just this summer. I've already assisted in teaching the robotics camp that we had at Callahan and will be having one at Uly. I'm also teaching a Bethmore Bible study this summer on the Book of James. And one thing that the Book of James tells us is that if we believe it, then we should live it. And I believe that my life is a testimony of what is important to me. If you know anything about my calendar of the last five years, you will have seen that I have invested in not only my own children, but I have poured into Nassau County's youth through 4H, through volunteering at the high school, through volunteering at the elementary school, through working with Spotswood Watkins on the first vocational scholarship at Hilliard High School. I love children. I love children so much, I'm adding to my family this year by taking on a German exchange student this year. So I appreciate the opportunity to serve on the board and I look forward to, with your vote, continuing to serve after August 14th. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Russell Johnson. I've lived in District 4 of the school board, I remember. Also, I live in the Hilliard area, actually, ten miles west of Hilliard, in the Bologna area. Lived there almost all of my life. And pretty much all of my married life is it for three years that we lived in central Florida. I've been in schools in Nassau County, grade 1, 312, graduated from West Nassau High School in 1972, attending the University of North Florida, received a political science and public administration degree. Continue on from college into the United States Department of Agriculture, Farm Service Agency for thirty-four and a half years. Just retired last December 31st. And continue my public service and the challenge ahead of running for the school board. With my core values, my education, my public service, and working as a resource person in the Florida State office, the past 21 years working with the Farm Service Agency, working with our county offices statewide, ministering the federal farm programs approved by Congress, designated to the Secretary of Agriculture, passed down to the states to administer, be financially responsible for our taxpayers' dollars, being good stewards of our money. I just feel that that is a plus as we move forward with our education and our ensuring that our children and teachers have the very best ahead of us. I do thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight. Thank you.
Are you ready for the first question? First question goes to Senator Williams. Why are you a candidate for the school board?
Well, I think that I've somewhat explained that before in the sense that this is not a decision that you suddenly jump into and say, "Oh, I'm going to be a candidate." It's a long process. It's one where you attend several meetings. You look at several issues that are being presented to the board over several years. I mean, it's just not one that I'm jumping into right now. It's one that I've attended board meetings for the last three and a half years. And I know most of you have seen me come up before the board many times on issues presented to the board and I've expressed my opinion on those issues. And they were well received. Many of the board members are very gracious and they're allowing me to present issues that I felt were important to the community, to the teachers, and to the students. So it's been a long process, if you know Jim.
Question number two. Why are you a candidate for the school board?
I'm a candidate for school board because as a parent of children in the schools, I have seen ways in which we excel and I've seen ways in which we could improve. I spend a lot of time investing in our Nassau County youth and I believe that serving on the board is a natural extension of what I'm already doing to invest in the youth. And I appreciate the opportunity to share my natural gifts and talents in education with Nassau County.
Second question. Why are you a candidate for Nassau County School Board District 4?
Well, my motivation, again, like I said, stems from service. Continuation of my career working with the Department of Agriculture. It was a golden opportunity to continue that with the election process coming up and the candidacy coming up this term for the four-year term for the school board District 4. So it was a golden opportunity, again, to continue that service. And again, the challenges and opportunities that are ahead of us as school board members are challenged and I'm ready to accept that challenge. Thank you.
Question number two. What is your stand on school choice options for parents? Charter school, virtual school, school, home, education?
I'm an advocate for school choice. I believe that school choice offers our students more freedom and opportunities than they otherwise would not have. I voted this year along with the other board members to expand our Nassau virtual school options to include K-12 in addition to Florida virtual school. School choice allows us the opportunity to give kids who are in the smaller schools such as Sylver, the opportunity to take AP and honors classes that they might not otherwise have available to them.
Same question. What is your stance on school choice options for parents?
I am very much in favor of that. As a parent, having a special needs child, even when my child was in school, you had the opportunity to seek the best for that child and to work with the school system and the parents. As a parent, we have that responsibility of choice and I believe that we should continue that.
Same question. What is your stance on school choice options for parents?
Depending on the situation and where the funding's going to come from and what impact school choice funding is going to have on our school system, it's important that we give the opportunity to those students who have special needs that the option that they can actually go to the school of their choice and expand their knowledge in that area. Many children learn at different levels and we have to recognize what level they learn at. For our system and our school district, we have to be very careful how funding is going to affect our school system. School choice is one of those areas that's going to... The dollars have to come from someplace. And if they're coming out of the general fund, they're going to affect our school system.
Right. Number three. Do you support merit pay for teachers and why?
Yes, I support merit pay if the funding isn't provided to the school system to pay for that. If it's paid for performance and the funding is not there, then we're not giving our teachers that funding that they so rightly deserve if they have performed well and our children have met the expectations and achievements that's been placed on them.
Question number two. Do you support merit pay for teachers and why?
You can say you support merit pay. I am concerned about the measurement that's going to be used to determine that merit increase. I mean, how do you determine merit pay for a teacher who's doing special needs children? I mean, one slight increment in improvement is going to be measured differently than a math teacher or a science teacher. So merit pay, yes, merit pay, but the measurement that we use to determine that merit pay is extremely important. And we need to define that upfront before we say, "We're going to support it." I want to make sure that it's equal across the board for all teachers.
Good. Same question. Do you support merit pay for teachers and why?
I have to say, as merit pay stands right now, that I don't support merit pay. The challenges that we have with merit pay is the teachers do not have control of which students are in their class. It is an unequal measurement of a teacher's skill because it assumes that the independent variable of the student's abilities are all the same. It is also based upon a flawed measurement system of the FCAT. The FCAT does not test science skills until fifth grade. The FCAT does not test employability skills. The FCAT, as we know, is getting ready to be transitioned into other measurement tools. So as it stands right now, I do not believe we have an accurate way to assess performance pay for teachers that's fair and reliable and tested.
This really is a tough one because we know the economy is not the economy that we had in the past. Question number two. If budget cuts are necessary, where would be the first area you would consider reducing spending? Richard?
The last area I would look at is teachers. They have the backbone of our system. So I think we need to look in other areas other than the areas where we're talking about teachers and teachers' cut. If we could cut areas in which there are... Maybe in the areas of transportation, the areas of maintenance area or something like that, but we can't cut our teaching staff. That's imperative. We may cut back on administrative areas. They may be areas there that we're not aware of yet that can be cut. But the last area is definitely we can't cut our students short and cutting the teacher staff would be cutting our teachers short.
Same question. If we could stick to the question, the question is, if budget cuts are necessary, where would be the first area you would reduce spending?
Personally, I don't like the word budget cuts. I would like to say budget savings. The one area where I feel like we could really be creative in saving money in our budget would be that of allowing more virtual school options for our kids. Most people do not realize that Nassau Virtual School is a part of Nassau County Public Schools and employs Nassau County teachers to operate. There are many parents, if they had the information available to them and they really understood what options were available to them through Nassau Virtual School, we would see more people participate. People do not realize that if every student that was in private school and homeschool were to re-enter into the brick and mortar schools, that we would not be able to house them. Our facilities are not set to be able to take on those additional students. So I believe we need to be more creative with our options in virtual school.
Again, if budget cuts are necessary, where would be the first area you would reduce spending?
Call savings in programs. You'd have to look at your budget and see where you could tighten it up. Call savings. The budget's not going to be easy. Everybody would have to tighten their bill.
I'm going to pass that question on. Or replace it. All right. This is getting close to the end. You've got two questions left. What are the two top issues that you see to be in the Nassau County School Board... What are the two top issues you see in the Nassau County School Board? Two top issues you see in the Nassau County School System?
The two top issues. The number one issue I believe that we struggle with is complacency. I believe that we need to balance being proud of our A-school rating without looking at the areas in which we need to improve. So we need to have open eyes and open ears to see what's going on in the world around us so that we can be more creative problem solvers in addressing some of our needs. The second need would be that of science, technology, engineering, and math. The world around us is moving towards STEM. We know that according to the National Commission on Mathematics and Science for the 21st Century, that 60% of the jobs in the 21st Century encompass skills and education that only 20% of our current workforce has. We've got to get on the ball with STEM education.
Question number two. One of the two top issues you see in the Nassau County School System?
Facing it. Facing it. Are you phrasing that facing the school board or facing our school system?
The question is, what are the two top issues you see as a candidate in the Nassau County School System?
Ensuring that we are financially sound, that we stay within our means, that we stay within our budget, that with the... We know the way the economy is and declining taxes and revenue, et cetera, that we're going to have to be good stewards of our taxpayer's money. Secondly, I think that our schools are excellent schools. We need to continue to improve in all areas, whether it is in like our technology, like the science, math, our engineering, et cetera, and also our vocational programs. I'd like to see our vocational programs expanded.
Richard, what are usually the two top issues in Nassau County School System?
Well, for the school board, the real task is going to get in... You've got to get a hold of your healthcare costs. Those healthcare costs are detrimental to the operation of our school. And unless we get a fine hold on that healthcare cost, it's going to continue to skyrocket and it's going to drain our budget. Secondly, I'm looking at transportation costs. And that's a key issue in our budget. We spend about $8 million just on items related to transportation costs. And as I said before, the STEM utilization of technology, but we've got to get a hold on what we have right now and look at what's going to cost us to make the change. We just can't rush into things like we've done in the past. We've got to sit back and really analyze what's going on.
Final question. How do you propose implementing the STEM opportunities for students in Nassau County? STEM standing for science, technology, engineering. A question goes to...
Do you answer?
I think it's Russell. He was last. Russell?
Okay. I think we need to move ahead. We need to do everything to ensure that our students are provided the opportunities that they will need for their future. And to get into credited colleges, et cetera, we do not need to sit back. We need to go forward and provide all the resources available for them and provide the teachers the resources to train our students in the science, engineering, technology, and math and not fall behind. Go forward.
Question number two. Richard, how do you propose implementing additional STEM opportunities for students? Science, technology, engineering?
I think those are important areas. I think there is a segment of our student population that we're forgetting about that's those children who are not going to be going on to college, the vocational needs of those children. We've got children that are going to age out of the system at 23-years-old. What about those children? What's going to happen to them? STEM is important and we need to keep up to date. We need to get rid of the antiquated computer systems that we have now, the iPod systems and where the teacher can evaluate each student separately. So yes, we need to move forward, but we cannot forget about those kids who need the vocational training.
Question number three. How do you propose implementing additional STEM opportunities for students? Science, technology, engineering?
I believe that effectively implementing STEM programs, it needs to begin on our elementary school levels. We have some science labs in our county which are aging and do not have the resources that they need to do the best job possible. We don't have a science lab in all of our schools in Nassau County and we need to remedy that fact. We need to have an aggressive recruiting and hiring program specifically to recruit teachers who have strong core classes in math, science, and engineering. We need to provide our principals with the tools that they need, either through hiring incentives or other means, to be able to recruit those teachers to our county or provide additional funds to train the teachers we already have. It's important that our kids have hands-on learning opportunities and all of our science teachers need to be equipped and skilled in having hands-on labs so that our kids can learn. If 4H can offer a robotics camp and computer programming in one week, I can't wait to see what Nassau County can do in one year.
All right. We are now going to go to questions. The crowd, our audience, anybody has any questions you want to ask, feel free to speak up and ask. And in all fairness, ask them to all three candidates.
Thank you. You talked about virtual option. Why haven't... Why... You said that that has to be expanded on. Why hasn't it been expanded on already? Why don't more students or more parents know about that now?
We need to... My belief is that we need to do a better job marketing the programs that we already have to our parents and to our children. That's one of the areas I believe that we could do a better job on our website. One of the things I have advocated for since I have been on the board is one of the things that is planned to take place as a re-engineering of Nassau County's web site so that parents can find that information readily available. We do not have a search engine on our website and it makes it very difficult for people, especially if you're not very technology literate, to find information without a search engine.
Then that same question, we also ask it to Russell.
Yeah, I was going to say the main thing is, like Kim pointed out, it has to do with communication first, getting the information into the parents' hands and an understanding of the... For the children, kids, and the parents of what program options. Yeah, we have many students who are already in virtual programs in the school system right now. I've got a grandson who's already involved in taking virtual programs and because he's slipping behind. So, you know, I think the programs are there. I think the administrative personnel at the schools are responsible for getting that information out to the parents when they see that there's a problem with a child. They need to take the lead and inform the parents that these programs are available.
I'm going to go to Erin and then Doug. Got a question?
Yeah, I was just curious what you guys feel or what you guys see as the proper relationship between the superintendent and the school board because after all, both of you guys are elected and what's that... What do you see that relationship like?
You'll be answered?
I don't know. I'll free you.
We'll go ahead and start with Russell.
I think it's a partnership. It's like we talked nine minutes ago with the virtual. You have to communicate. You have to work together as a team and move, move our school system forward. You can't sit back. You've got to move forward.
I guess I take a little different stance on that. I understand that there is a relationship that needs to be developed, but I believe the school board should take the lead and direct the superintendent, should take the initiative on certain programs they feel are important and direct him in that direction, not vice versa.
I believe that the role of superintendent is that of the day-to-day management and supervision of personnel in the school district. It is the role of the school board to have oversight of the school system as well as policy and procedures of the board. I also believe that it is our role to set budget priorities as we go into the budgeting season. And I also believe in the words of Ronald Reagan, that we are to trust but verify. We need to trust the superintendent because he is also elected to that position and he has his role, but it's our job as the board to verify the information, to represent the taxpayers up there on that board. It's important that we have a diversity on the board because we represent people in the entire county. We represent people who live the beach. We represent people who live on a farm. So that's my belief.
Doug, your question?
My question as a parent of two children in middle school is oftentimes they become good users of websites. They all know how to get on a website or an iPod and click around, but that's being a user, not a creator of technology. The legislature's authorized school districts to start providing in middle school instruction on web-based languages such as hypertext markup, cold fusion, and JavaScript. Understanding how websites function and work and the driving skills to be successful with them, where do you stand on that issue? Is that something as a policy that you would implement? Would you realign the budget? Or is that something that you think is five years away? Is it next year? Is it 10 years away? I'd like to know your opinion.
First of all, in that area, until we get defined direction from the legislature, there's nothing that we can direct. We need definite direction from the legislature as to what they're perceived we are to input into our classrooms. I mean, we're shooting pie in the sky right now. We can't do it without the legislature's direct input.
Richard, they've already provided direction. So the authorization exists today. In fact, it's fairly specific as to implementation of those types of instructional programs.
The policy hasn't come down yet. Now, I haven't seen it at the local level, have you?
The policy would be developed by the board.
Right, but it hasn't been implemented at the local level yet, has it?
I've not seen... Not yet.
That's what I'm trying to say.
Okay, gentlemen, the question's been asked.
I believe we need to set STEM priorities in our budget and our hiring and training of teachers. I believe we need to be moving forward now with the technology trains. Our kids are equipped to be creators of technology, not just users of technology. There is an opportunity that kids have called ID Tech camps in the summer where they can go and learn how to program iPhone apps, Android apps, or C++ and Java in Weeflon camps. And so I really believe that we could be hiring or training teachers so that they could be implementing this in the middle school level after teaching a robotics camp to middle school kids, sixth and seventh grade, and see what they can accomplish. They could blow us out of the water if we gave them the tools that they needed to be able to accomplish their goals. If we don't act now with STEM and technology, then the next Google, the next Apple is going to be from China or Korea or Finland. It's not going to be an American product. We have to empower our kids. We can't wait.
With computer labs in the school and the kids have the availability to use those computers each day in the computer labs, and I believe the ninth graders are going to have to take a computer course, whether they have a computer system at home or the school provides it, that, what Doug mentioned, should be a part of that curriculum. That should be taught when they enter that age using those computer labs. That's something that should... We should already have in place and we don't have it in place because of that information and technology to prevent children from misusing the computer system, whether at home or at school. That's just part of education and learning technology. And we would have, hopefully, that they would know how to use the various new high tech from the iPods to everything else, everything we're going to do. The next five years is going to be... We're going... Five years from now, everything's going to change. And we can't be left behind, really.
Any more questions? Anybody?
I have another one.
Go ahead.
Richard touched on this a little bit, but I think that your... Most of your... As a school system, most of your costs are going to be people. They're going to be labor. You know, probably I bet you'll be looking at the budget, be 90 or 95 percent, something to do with labor costs. I think as a business owner myself and employees, you know, you notice that employee benefits cost more and more and more and more every year. you notice that employee benefits cost more and more and more and more every year, and you get less and less and less and less. I was wondering if, you know, when it comes to be budget time, if you would consider looking at employee benefit costs as a way to sort of reducing spending rather than just passing it out back at the taxpayer or worse, cutting programs?
The board already looks at cost savings when it comes to healthcare costs and benefit costs, stuff like that. That's the main issue they're doing right now, is looking at those costs and trying to find a way to lower those costs. So, I mean, please redefine your question.
Well, the people that made recommendations for the health... The, for instance, healthcare are the people that work in the district. They're not, you know, they're not outside people, but not people coming in saying, "Hey, this is a good way to structure our plan." People that work for the district decide what benefits we're going to pass the recommendations for.
Yeah, well, but through the use... I mean, you have a negotiating NTA that negotiates those benefits. Okay, so it's ultimately the responsibility of the board, working within the contract realms to determine what benefits will be utilized within the system. And that's where the costs are at. We have to negotiate those costs into the system.
Do it.
Okay, I want to make sure I understand the question. Could you restate the question?
I guess the basic premise is, will you consider looking at employee benefits costs rather than raising taxes or higher programs?
Yes, I believe... I'm an administrator as well, and a business administrator for a company. And one of the things that I am in charge of myself in that role is evaluating insurance benefits each year and analyzing between the different companies where we are able to stay within our budget. I definitely believe that healthcare costs is something that should be looked at on a regular basis. I know one of the things that we have utilized in our company has been the health savings account option because it saves the employee and gives them flexibility and options, and it also saves the company and insurance costs. So I definitely think it's an area where we can be creative and we can be open to ideas and open to outside input.
I think management always looks at cost savings, and they look at the health benefits. They always look at health benefits first. But I can tell you, as a retired individual, as of December 31st, when you retire, you're going to pay for your health insurance benefits, and they are very high. And so we need to provide our employees that are working with our children the very best plans that are available. And I know that healthcare costs continue to go up in other life insurances, et cetera. But we have to keep everything in its perspective, stay within the parameters, but also provide our employees the best that's out there.
Any more questions? All right, we're allowed 50 seconds closing, and we'll start in three.
Okay. Again, I want to thank everyone for the opportunity coming for you. Answered your questions as best as I could. I believe that my background in business would be utilized best with the School Board. I've proven that in the past, dealing with healthcare issues with the School Board. I've been a teacher in the system, so I know what it feels like as far as healthcare costs are concerned and who has to deal with it. Those healthcare costs are a negotiated item between the board and the teachers. Those things haven't changed. They won't change in the future. So those are budgetary items that will have to be considered. I think I'm the best one to lead in that area with my business background, both nationally and internationally. I've dealt with costs, not only healthcare costs, transportation costs, and all sorts of encumbered budgetary items that we have to deal with. And these are things that are going to affect the school, that are going to affect the community, and it's going to affect the taxpayer. Thank you.
I appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight. I believe that I am the candidate that has the most recent and relevant experience in the education system. I am a business owner. I am a leader. I am an educator, and I appreciate your vote on August 14.
I do appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight with all you fine people. I do feel like that my experience, my core values, my education, my public service, working in not only an administrative, human resources, grievance, budgets, accounting, the areas of expertise that is needed to continue as we go forward in the future will be an asset to the School Board, and I just appreciate the opportunity. And by all means, do not forget that this is countywide, Don Partson election. We need everyone to stay focused, and that everyone can vote on August 14, and one vote will count. Thank you.
You know, running for office is an important step, obviously, for yourself, but for your family. I personally want to thank all three of you for stepping up to represent District Four. I think they're all excellent candidates. It's going to certainly be a tough choice out there.